Oh, mics, we're waiting on mic. Where? Oh, okay.
Okay, perfect.
You feeling better? All right, we're ready to start, yes. Hi, everybody, good afternoon, thank you for being patient with us. Today's a little an off day, so we were supposed to start at three, but there was some little issues with with us today. But we're getting, we're ready to start. I believe we're waiting on Ms. Ortega to come in, but we can start without her. I believe that Marissa Gerlach is on Zoom.
That is correct.
So I'm going to call this meeting to order, and today is January the 13th, 2025, and it is 3:36. So Ms. Anna, would you establish quorum for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Norrie Garza.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand, Mr. Plata.
Let's just pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, thanking you for guiding us through a successful year in 2024. We are humbled by the opportunities we had had to serve our community and work toward the betterment of our city. Today, we also turn our thoughts and prayers to those affected by the devastating California fires. Lord, we ask that you comfort and strength to surround the individuals, families, and communities who are suffering, granted wisdom and the resiliency to the first responders, firefighters, and volunteers who are working tirelessly to protect and rebuild our lives. In your precious name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest stage of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Ms. Anna, is there any disclosure of conflicts that were filed?
Yes, ma'am. We've got one for Mayor Pro Tem Plata on Executive Session Item Number Two, and Councilwoman Alberto Vela on Executive Session Item Number One and Executive Session Item Number Seven.
Okay, thank you. All righty, and we're going to move on to presentations, and like Father Roy likes to say, it's a beautiful day in the neighborhood with the presence of our beautiful young ladies today. Ms. Amy, you want to proceed with a presentation?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Today, I have the great honor of having these young ladies come with us and for today's proclamation. Before we start our proclamation, they would like to just say a few words and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Elle Holbrook, I'm Queen Citrona the 88th, and I'll be reading proclamation today.
Hi, I'm Rachel Garcia, Princess of Orange Blossom.
Hi, I'm Hymena Lopez, Duchess of White Wing.
Hi, I'm Ella Hartzog, and I'm the Duchess of Greensworgen.
Hi, I'm Macy Vaughn, and I'm the Duchess of Delta Waters.
Good afternoon, I'm Aaliyah Saravia, the Duchess of Royal Palms.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Tiherina, and I'm the Duchess of Butterfly.
Hi, I'm Samantha Cardona, Duchess of Bluebonnet.
Hi, I'm Sophia Garza, I'm the Duchess of Sunflower.
Hello, I'm Evelyn Alanis, Duchess of the Pomelo Grapefruit.
Hi, I'm Bella Casada, I'm Duchess of Pink Grapefruit.
Hi, I'm Cor Sanchez, and I'm Princess Anna the 75th.
Hi, my name is Zanderin Garza.
Hi, my name is Emma Wilkinson, Princess of Tangerine Blossom.
Hi, I'm Emory Goddessa, Princess of Grapefruit Blossom.
Thank you so much.
Whereas, the Texas Citrus Fiesta was started by Johnny Cherry in the late 1920s. A royal court chosen from prominent valley families included King Citrus, Queen Citrona, the Princess of Orange Blossom, the Princess of Grapefruit Blossom, a lady-in-waiting, Princess Anna and her attendants, the Princess of Vine Blossom, and the Princess of Lemon Blossom. And whereas, the first annual Fiesta was held in 1932 with the theme Coronation and Padding of Citrus. The one-day celebration included a coronation ceremony with Johnny Cherry as King Citrus the First, and citrus exhibits, fruit packing contest, a flying circus, a football game, and a parade. By 1934, the Fiesta was expanded to two days with the addition of the Fiesta-style show and the Fruit, Vegetable, and Flower-style show, which is now known as the Product Costume Style Show, which features costumes made from local agricultural products. And whereas, the cherished tradition of the Texas Citrus Fiesta royalty continues to this day, celebrating our community's vibrant history and citrus heritage. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, do hereby recognize and proclaim the month of January as Texas Citrus Fiesta Month, with this year's theme Boots and Blossoms, and invites the community to Texas Citrus Fiesta celebrations, starting with the Texas Citrus Fiesta Product Costume Style Show on Tuesday, January 21st, Coronation on Thursday, January 23rd, and Texas Citrus Fiesta Parade of Oranges Saturday, January 25th, proclaimed on this, the 13th day of January 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously for five zero. That's okay, we'd love to take a picture with you guys, if you don't mind. Yes. Look at her boots.
I didn't get to say hi. Um, hi.
I think so. I know, right? Okay, we'll let them, we'll let them exit. Okay, the next item on our agenda is November Employee of the Month, Ms. Mungia.
The Employee of the Year.
That's a lot of. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're going to go ahead and start with the November Employee of the Month. Our K-9 Division is on their way. So for the month of November 2024, our Employee of the Month recipients are Officer Ruben Gonzalez and Officer Victor Brandon Solis. They were nominated by Chief Torres, Lieutenant George Science, and Sergeant Vidal Farias. I'd like to ask them to join us up here in the front, please. Okay. The nomination reads as follows. On Saturday, November 30th, 2024, Officers Ruben Gonzalez and Victor Brandon Solis responded to a critical 911 call. A two-year-old child was reported to be choking and bleeding from the mouth. Arriving on scene with lights and sirens, Officer Solis immediately took charge of the situation. He received the unresponsive child from a frantic family member and promptly administered back blows to dislodge the foreign object. Officer Gonzalez arrived shortly after and assisted by continuing the back blows and abdominal thrusts. Thanks to the officer's swift and decisive actions, the child began to breathe again. Mission Fire Department paramedics arrived and transported the child to Mission Regional Medical Center, where they were able to remove the pressed-on object lodged in the child's throat. The child was later released from the hospital. We want to thank Officers Gonzalez and Solis for protecting the safety and well-being of our community. We appreciate them and the outstanding service they provide. Congratulations. Unfortunately, they could not be here today. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On behalf of our police force and our officers, I'd like to say that our officers, every day, day out, they go out in our communities and combat crime, and in essence, they end up doing what it takes to keep our citizens safe every day. And this is no different today than yesterday and last year and the year after today. You know, we do this because this is what they do. This is what they chose to do, and they do it very well. So I'm very honored, very proud of our staff, and so just want to thank, thank them and thank you all for giving us the floor to say a few words on behalf of our officers. They couldn't be here, our handlers, who are going to be here in a little bit for the next presentation, but as far as now, I want to thank you all for the support.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next group, they're on their way. Do you want me to continue, or do you want me to come back? They're on their way.
If you'd like, we can go on to another item, and then we can come back to, once they're, once they're back.
Okay, thank you.
Since we're kind of moving out of the, the order, I'd like to see here from our Mission Economic Development Corporation. I know they've got a meeting that they've got to get to. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me here. Techno Garcia, CEO of the Mission Economic Development Corporation. And as you know, I come here on a monthly basis to give you reports on activity and so forth. This, this month, I want to share with you the, our annual report, first time we've ever done one. Of course, I've only been here, I'm going on my third year, but really proud of this document. This is something that we worked on for months. Part of our team is here, Belen Guerrero and Naxeli Lopez, who worked on it quite a bit, are here behind me and in the audience. But really, it was a team effort, everyone gathering material for this particular annual report. We did it for a few reasons, before I go through it very quickly. One, we want to show the, show the board and the City Council what we're up to. We wanted to annotate our accomplishments and our success stories for the year. And three, we feel as though we want to be more transparent with the public and show them what their, what their taxpayer dollars are doing and how they're creating jobs and investment in the city of Mission. So those are kind of the three reasons and three kind of reasons we put this together. But I'll go through it, you have a copy, but I'll go through it for public, so the public can see. Had the cover, we had the event center on the cover, which is really important for us, and go back. As you can see here, and I don't mind saying, Mr. Plata, that's my picture, I shot that, so I'm sure it looks good, right? And that's, that's kind of a three-fold picture for us. One is, it's an extraordinary facility for the City of Mission. It indicates progress and modernity in Mission, and also the EDC has a hand in financing that project. So very important for us, and I think the region, for us to have that facility. Now, our picture of our board members, which you all know. I think our latest addition was Mr. Olivares at the end, but all the other board members, from Mr. Davis to Mr. Hernandez, the president, have been here for over two years, Mr. Vargas and Depra and Estela Science, and of course, Mayor here on as well. A year of progress. We tracked job creation, we had a hand in at least 775 new jobs created, $54 million in capital investment. We, we invested $600,000 in small business programs, and, and we provided altogether $1.6 million in small business assistance. Again, we're using as a 4B, the taxpayer funds, the sales tax funds that we collected, and developed these small business programs, and we have several of them. And so we tried to spread that out as best we can, and now we're on year number two of the programs we just started in, and we're, I think we're going to go through the judging tomorrow for the citywide Ruby Red Ventures Build Mission Fund, and then we'll start the programs all over again. So this is a really proud moment for us, and I thank the government for the city to know that we invested this much. You can see a picture of the Border Theater, which received $25,000 as part of our downtown assistance program. Again, more, more numbers here, different companies and how many, what their investments were, how many jobs are created. You'll see ubiquity up there with 336 job commitments. By the way, they just came to us and asked if they could lease a classroom in our facility for two months, so they can train an additional 100 people for jobs. So, so they're really moving up and creating more jobs for Mission. You see Olive Garden and other things up there, you see six national brands, we have 9% sales tax revenue growth year-over-year. But anyway, all this part of just informing you and informing the public. Some of the partnerships and initiatives that we had last year, is we signed a trade agreement with the City of San Luis, and promoted the Ansel Duas Bridge in Mexico and other places. Basically, all this is to position, to market Mission as a, as a key player in global commerce, especially here in this region. So we're really happy about doing that. Those are the small business programs that we mentioned, 600,000, 100 jobs, 107 jobs created or retained, and 27 small businesses assisted. We'll do even more this year. We, we made a larger budget commitment to small business assistance, so hopefully that number will be in the 30s coming here. You know, you think about it, you step back and say, oh, you only helped 27 businesses, and we just did a survey, we, we drove around the entire city trying to count all the businesses in Mission in one day, and we know it's in the thousands, and you look at the 27, it's not much. But we've been to all the conferences around the state and in the region, and we're doing more for small businesses than just about any other EDC in Texas. And so we went to the state conference, and we were way ahead of what other people were proposing. So again, if you look at this for a 10-year stretch, and you're helping 30 businesses a year, you're going to be helping 300 within, within a few years. So we're really proud of that, and we will do as much as we can, hopefully we do more. That was the downtown assistance program. What we changed this one from the facade program that was here for a long time, we changed it to the downtown assistance, so the funding could be used for more things than just the facade. So we found that businesses had plumbing problems, roofing problems, structural issues, you know, border theater, of course, more of a facade, but they worked under our sign, people bought equipment, stoves and refrigerators, and so barber shop chairs, I think, all kinds of stuff. So we're super happy with that, and you can really see the difference there, so we hope to do more there as well. Ruby Red Ventures, again, this was the competition, where these were for new businesses, and we were able to award several, several thousands of dollars to these folks as well. This was the Ruby Red Ventures Build Mission Fund, which we're doing the version of this year, $15,000, and we probably helped about, about 20 businesses, some of those you'll recognize on that list. But again, everybody was very happy with it, and they've done all sorts of things with, with the funding. We visited those folks, we required them to give us photos, and so to track the progress, and as part of our compliance to that funding. Telling our story, everybody talks about narratives and telling the story. We, we've done our best to integrate media, have new partners, and we're using. We've done our best to integrate media, have new partners, and we're using KRUV, we've been in five, turn four. We've bought lots of ads in the Mission Progress Times, and so the monitor's covered it. So we're trying to do our best. Of course, we use social media a lot and on LinkedIn and Facebook, and you can see that we've had a large impact there as well. Again, the annual report also talks about our investing and impact. And we, through our programs, we were able to commit almost $100,000 in donations to local nonprofits and whether they be city-related or otherwise. But one of the things that we're doing is, as y'all are probably aware, that any time we get into an incentive issue and a private sector business receives an incentive from us, we're asking them to donate to a city-related nonprofit. So as you can see, we, lots of those donations have gone to Boys and Girls Clubs, some to the Police Department, the Historical Museum, and et cetera. So we're really proud of that, about asking these businesses, and they're really excited about it. They really jumped at the chance to donate. I think one of the ones was kind of creative was the Olive Garden was donating $25,000 worth of food per year for five years to our food bank, right? And so we're trying to be creative with that, but the bottom line is for those businesses that we're helping, that they help us. The scholarship thing has been around for some time, Mayor. You remember this and Mr. Plata and those of you who've been around for a little bit on the council. Again, we're hit record numbers here recently. You've got more people from Mission taking advantage of the scholarship program at SDC than ever before. We have funded 280 students since 2013, but a lot of those have come in the last two and a half years. The seed building, again, we want to share our successes there. We've grown revenue 15%. We've got six, I think now seven higher, or maybe it's still six. I'm overcounting the number of higher education institutions in the building. We have classes, we have training for private sector. As I mentioned, ubiquity, which is one of those pictures there from the training for, they're going to use it for training again. Of course, we have the coffee shop and the brewery and other amenities there. Really proud of the increase in revenue and usage that the building has had lately. Again, looking at the numbers here, won't bore you with every line, but just to show sales tax growth, seed revenue incentives, and then our expenses and our budget. Looking ahead for this year, we're going to try to do better in every aspect that we have. I think we have a fabulous team that is extremely talented and where I think we're hitting our goals and exceeding them in a lot of cases. So hopefully, we can continue on the success, and I want to thank you all for your support from our budget to our initiatives and your input to us is really valuable, and we appreciate it. I think that kind of concludes the report. I want to mention other things, but if you have any questions for me regarding the report or comments, they cannot, if not. I'll mention just a couple of other things. Mayor, you know that we're going to host the RGV Legislative Tour here in Mission, which should be about 50 legislators and their top staff people next week. So we're glad about that. You and I, of course, are going to go to the, at the invitation of the Governor of San Luis Potosi, to a conference on Wednesday. And we're also meeting with the Economic Development Secretary on Tuesday, pardon me, Wednesday, and then meeting with the Governor on Wednesday, on Thursday, and the Secretary on Wednesday. We'll be back on Friday. And then we have the ICSE, which is a big retail conference in Dallas at the end of the month, and we've already set up several meetings with retailers there. But those are just some of the activities that we're involved in. So I appreciate you. And again, if I have any comments or questions, I'll take them now.
Thank you, and congratulations to you and your team. Tecla, y'all are doing a great job.
Our team's integral to everything that happens. I'm just over there, you know, sitting at my desk and watching things happen. But no, they're very, they're very good and really proud of them. So again, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate your support as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, guys? No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I think we can go back to our October, right?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And last year, they were out in a training, learning to be even better K-9 officers. So we wanted to make sure they were here, so we pushed it a bit back. So I'm going to read the nomination for the October. It's our Mission PD K-9 Division, which consists of Holden Kaiser, Juan Garcia, and Joshua Jimenez. And the nomination, they were nominated by Chief Torres and Sergeant Alejandro Alial, and the nomination reads as follows. "The K-9 Division's exceptional performance has a profound impact on both the city of Mission and the Police Department. By seizing significant amounts of illegal drugs and cash, they directly contribute to reducing the availability of dangerous substances on the streets. Not only does this lower the crime rate, but it also enhances the overall safety and well-being of the community. For the city of Mission, these efforts result in few drug-related incidents, which can lead to a decrease in associated crimes such as theft, violence, and health emergencies. The removal of 1.5 million worth of street drugs from circulation disrupts the operations of drug-trafficking networks, making it more difficult for these organizations to operate within the city. This disruption can also lead to a safer environment from drug-related harm. The success of the K-9 Division demonstrates the effectiveness of diligent investigative work and proactive policing strategies. This leads to increased community trust and support as residents see tangible results in the department's effort to protect them. Thank you to our K-9 Division for all you do on a daily basis in protecting the safety and well-being of our community. We appreciate you and the outstanding service you provide. Congratulations."
Congratulations, Mayor. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor and Council, Chief Torres here again. I'd like to say that these folks behind me are the real deal. Day in and day out, while we sleep, they're out there hunting for the bad element. They've been involved here recently in millions of dollars' worth of not only currency but also narcotics. They do work together with local, state, and federal agencies. And so everyone looks for Mission PD, for our K-9 handlers, and so they're very successful, and I'm very proud of them. This is not a reflection of me, but the reflection of our council that supports our police force. So I want to thank you all for doing what you do, and thank you, guys. Appreciate everything that you all do. Would anyone want to say a few words? No? Sure? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Well, congratulations again, and we're going to go down and take a picture with you guys. Okay. Thank you, guys, and congratulations again. We're very, very proud of our first responders and our police department as well. Okay, the next item is the presentation of delinquent tax report.
Good evening, Mayor. Esteemed council members. Mr. Pettis?
Good evening.
Oh, thank you. Kelly Salasat, on behalf of Leiberg-Goggan Blair and Sampson, should present the delinquent tax collection report for the city of Mission for the period of October 1st through September 30th, 2024. Our delinquent tax collection program on behalf of the city of Mission focuses on two basic premises. The first is to collect from the individual taxpayer first, and secondly, use the tool of litigation only as a final option to collect. During the fiscal year, we completed eight demand mailings, mailing over 8,700 statements to delinquent taxpayers within the city of Mission. We made or received over 4,400 phone calls. We knocked on 190 doors within the city of Mission, educating and informing delinquent taxpayers about their delinquency and doing our best to get them into a payment agreement. We had 65 payment agreements and 257 payoff requests. Regarding our litigation activities, we filed 111 lawsuits, disposed of 54. We took 47 judgments, and right now, as of January, we have 190 lawsuits pending for the city of Mission involving over $495,000 owed in base penalty and interest. We regularly conduct tax sales and resales on properties with little to no effort to pay the delinquent taxes. During last fiscal year, we completed six tax sales, placing eight properties for sale, six of those sold, and two of them were pulled due to a payment agreement. Last fiscal year, and I can't remember how long preceding that, we have yet to place a occupied designated homestead property up for sale. It's very important for us to balance compassionate collections, but also putting the city first with your fiscal needs. We also were able to collect over $28,000 in mowing liens as a courtesy to the city of Mission. Those are liens that are placed on the city to upkeep mowing and for beautification of the city. Sometimes those go unpaid, but if it's on a delinquent property, we incorporate those into our lawsuits so those can get paid at judgment time or tax sale time. Regarding our collection efforts, you'll see that we collected over $570,000 in base tax, over $252,000 in penalty and interest. And you'll see that green mark, which is a new item that we're collecting, we're inserting in our delinquent tax reports. It's coded refunds. It's over $82,000. I want to highlight, that's not a refund issued by our office to the taxpayer due to a wrong payment. Refunds is a term used by the appraisal district. A refund is triggered when, say, someone protests their property value successfully. They have already paid their property taxes, and when that gets reduced, sometimes they're entitled to a refund. And a lot of cases, those refund dollars come from the delinquent tax collection bucket. That's created a little confusion over the years, especially most recently, because there's been a high increase in those. As a matter of fact, like it says here, y'all have $82,000 in refunds issued. Over the past four years, the average has been $41,000 per year. So there's been a significant increase, so we thought it would be important to highlight that because those dollars were collected by our firm, but the city doesn't see those monies because those are given back to the successful protester. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. Looking on to the future, we will continue to litigate those properties and work with taxpayers as best we can, monitor any cases of bankruptcy, and advocate for the city, continue our mailing program, and place any properties for sale with little to no effort to pay that are in judgment. That concludes my delinquent tax report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a quick question, and it's just out of curiosity. If you'll go back to your, to the screen, I think it's page two. Page two?
There we go.
Okay, so your 257 payoff requests. I mean, you may not have this number, but are, can you tell me how many of those requests were by a third party?
I'd be happy to answer that question. You're right, I don't have that with me, but I'll look into being able to provide that number for you. If you're referring to those tax lenders or, and/or mortgage companies, I'll see if I can, if I have an ability to track that down.
Yes, because I think if that, if that's a high number, I think that we need to do a little bit better job of educating our residents that there's other options.
Yes, you know, in prior years, let me see, post-pandemic years, I'm sure, hopefully, you're aware of the American Rescue Plan, where the federal government was giving money out to folks that were delinquent in taxes, mortgages, insurance and stuff. That program is no longer out there, but there are other options, you're right, Mayor, so I'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you. And that's it for me. Anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye. All righty. Next presentation is Pause for Help.
Good afternoon. I'm Dandia, with the Executive Director with Pause for Help, and I just want to say thank you. I want to point out something that Mr. Plata said that we really emphasize with Pause for Help. We are humbled to serve our community, and we've been doing this now for three years as Pause for Help, as an advocate here in Mission for animals. I want to bring up the event that we held in September of 2024. We held a 5K community run with over 500 participants, and we were able to raise over $5,000. 20 of those, we allocated 20 appointments. We approved 40 total, 20 for the community of Mission for residents for spay and neutering, and 20 were allocated for the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society. So we were able to raise over $5,000 and set up 40 appointments in our community for spay and neutering services. We have already gone through 10 community slots, and we have 10 that are pending for spay and neutering. We have recently provided food, blankets, and media during the holidays to bring out public support for blankets and food, and consistently encourage the public to bring towels, tarps, and food to our mission shelter. We have continued to support our mission shelter. In December, 17 slots for the community, for the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society were scheduled, and the clinic was able to see 10 of those when we started the process, over two separate appointments. Due to some changes in the vet schedule and an animal that was lactating, one of those surgeries could not be performed. So as of this date, we've completed 10 community appointments for spay and neutering and 10 appointments for the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society. However, there were some concerns that were brought up as animals were being adopted out and that list changed. We were quite disappointed that animals were being adopted out unaltered, and that's a great concern. We did receive a letter from the veterinarian, there were actually three veterinarians, while we were doing the appointments, and they were very concerned about the surgeries that were being performed on long-stay dogs. Those are dogs that have been at the shelter for six months or more. And actually, they wrote a letter, and we are no longer allowed to provide services to the shelter because of what their findings were. So this is a big concern for us since we're out fundraising and we're asking for support from the city and we're wanting to spay and neuter these animals. The letter written on the 13th from the three veterinarians stated that these animals were severely underweight and emaciated. Their pelvic bones, rib bones, and spine were clearly visible, a clear sign of malnutrition and neglect. Most had fleas and ticks with recently occurring lesions, cuts, and wounds. And now, the vet clinic is refusing to service the humane society, therefore leaving us in a lurch with these appointments. This is very concerning to us, and there is an ongoing investigation on cruelty and neglect at that shelter. I want to assure you, Commissioner, City Manager, and Mayor, that we are standing by allocating, advocating, and allocating funds that are available for the shelter. However, our hands are tied at this time, and we can no longer offer those services However, our hands are tied at this time, and we can no longer offer those services based on the letter that we received on December 13th. We do appreciate your support, and I want to let you know that we will continue as Pause for Help to support these animals in any way possible. We want to thank the city for taking a proactive approach in looking into this and helping us find solutions for spay and neuter. We want to also ask that you correct the problem, and the only way out of this is to ensure that our partner, the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society, does spay and neuter these animals before adopting out with no exceptions. And again, I want to thank you for allowing us to start that process with the Humane Society. I want to thank you for allowing the community residents to have ability to come through Pause for Help and have services provided. It's very expensive here in our valley for surgeries, and many of our residents cannot afford that. We offer food, we offer vaccines, we offer spay and neutering, and we're out there working every day to raise these funds. So I just wanted to commend our volunteers and thank you again for being a partner with us with Pause for Help. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Anyone questions? No, Mayor? No? Okay, thank you, Dendia.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next item is our chamber. Brenda?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilwoman Mike. Okay, so wonderful activities happening at the chamber. Our two signature events are coming up. One of them is our Buenas Taras Luncheon. The topic is state of hospitality and tourism, so we're really excited to share some of the awareness of hospitality and tourism within the community. And that's coming up on February 5th. We have half tables, full tables available for purchase and sponsorship. We also have on March 7th, it's a Friday, our Winter Texan Fiesta. It's an annual event where we thank our Winter Texan community coming and investing and spending their time here in Mission. So that is coming up for March 7th. We have some webinars with our partners at UTRGV once for January 15th on knowing your business rivals. The next one is January 30, and that one is in Spanish for Pequeñas Empresas on la Gestión de Marca. And upcoming ribbon cuttings, we do have two, one for Blow, Blow, Dry Bar, and the other one for Pete Hadamio Insurance. Pete actually purchased a new location here off of Sherry, so we'll be celebrating those ribbon cuttings. And lastly, we are really excited to kick off under the Discover Mission Division, the first inaugural citrus sip-off, a people's choice competition, which will be at the Bryan House on January 24th. So we're really excited. We've teamed up with local bartenders and mixologists so we can go ahead and design an official grapefruit cocktail for Texas Citrus Fiesta. So that's happening January 24th. We do have limited tickets for purchase as well. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you. Next item is a departmental report. Those are in our packets. Are there any questions for staff?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the reports as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously for zero. And the next item is citizens' participation.
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Susan LaBour. She wants to speak on agenda item number five, the spay and neuter initiative.
Okay. If you would just please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Good afternoon. My name is Susan LaBour. I'm a citizen of Mission at 100 Saturn Street in Mission, and I just would respectfully like to recommend that the city take some of the taxpayers' money and put it towards spay and neutering of the animals at the Mission Shelter. The last thing we need are more puppies, and I'd appreciate your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. It's not quite 4:30, and that's when we're supposed to have our public hearing, so I'm going to move on to consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? For further discussion? And those are items number 14 through 29?
Can I just, can they go over 17, Mayor?
You want to pull 17? Okay. May I have a motion to accept?
Just may I also move with the exception of number 17?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, except for item number 17, that will be discussed in more detail. And that is with item number 16 with resolution number 1939, item number 25, resolution number 1940, 26, resolution number 1941, 27, resolution 1942, 28, resolution 1943. Is that correct, Ms. Anna?
Yes, ma'am. And item number 20 would be ordinance number 5583.
I'm sorry, give me that number again?
5583.
5583. Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, except for number 17? Say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay, item number 17? Chief Torres?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chief Torres. Item number 17, authorization to award contract for security guard services for MLG Protection Services. Solicitation for contract proposals previously open. The City of Mission received five proposals, and MLG was selected. MLG previously had been used for several areas, like the bridge, a church, and also to the library. However, right now, we're not using them for the church or the bridge, so we're requested by the library. Instead of sending an officer out there, we'll send a guard. That's kind of rare when that happens.
So are they currently doing work for us right now?
They are. Yes.
Not the other four? This one is the one that is doing?
Just this one's. Been with us for a while now.
And then the lowest bid?
Yeah.
Correct.
And the church being La Lomita? Or what church are we talking about?
Yes, the church right here, Guadalupe.
Oh.
You want to explain that?
Yeah.
Because I had the same question. Well, they used to use them before. I don't use them, but sometimes a church would call and ask for a guard, they have concerns. But we don't use them anymore.
Oh, okay.
Apparently, we were providing them.
They used to use them when the influx of aliens were...
Oh, okay. When they were being housed at the...
Assistant Chief Rodriguez here.
Yes.
Yes, so the parish called, and they requested help for our assistance because they were getting a very large number.
Right.
And instead of dedicating an officer for that facility, we dedicated an armed guard, although that's not the case now, so we're not doing that anymore.
Okay. All right, just to be clear.
I'm glad, and this was before my time, so... But I don't use them today, so...
Okay. All righty.
Thank you. Mayor, I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize an award contract for security guard services to MLG Protection Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we can do item number 30, which is the approval and recommendation for website design and style.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, City Manager. Item number 30, approval of recommendation for website design and style. Seeking approval on the recommended design and style for the City of Mission's new website, which was approved on October 14th, 2024 during council meeting. Example of the proposed design has been prepared for your review to ensure it aligns with the city's vision and preferences before moving forward with the final development. So we're in the initial stages of developing the new website. It will still be missionTexas.us. We'll be having our first design discovery meeting in just a few days. That's why it was important to present to you today so you could approve or give us any feedback before we move forward. We'll be going through multiple meetings. We'll have a color and layout approval, and the launch date will be July 10th. The timeline was set by Civic Plus, not by us. That's the earliest they could deliver the website. So general design style, we want to improve usability and navigation for residents. Accessibility compliance, we'll be able to change the language and do many other things. We're looking for a modern, professional, simple look. We'll be integrating new features, and we'll make sure that it's mobile-friendly as well. So we saw many sample websites designed recently by Civic Plus. There were many great ones, but this is one that we wanted to show you. Of course, we are not copying any other city, but we are taking ideas and inspiration from many of them, but this is the one we wanted you to see. So as soon as you open the site, we're going to have a video displaying our city, right? Generic video of our city, that's something we've completed already, but so we can have ready by July, by the launch date. But of course, that's something we'll be able to update and change any time of the year. You know, if it's Texas Citrus Fiesta, that's something we could create a video of TCF and display on there for maybe two months prior. We have the social media sites on the site as well. I don't know if you can, I think it's being blocked by that little screen, but that's where we share our latest updates. That's a quick slide, that is our social media, so we'll make sure to have that visible as soon as you enter our site. Then we can scroll a little bit down. On that section, we'll have, I know it's important to have our online payments, that's usually one of the top reasons our citizens visit our website, so we'll have online payments. Of course, employment opportunities, another good one is a 311 app for residents to report any concerns, and of course, we can discuss anything else that we think is priority for residents to see as soon as they enter the website. Then we can scroll down. We'll have the latest news. That's something new that we currently don't have in our site, so things we're sharing on our social media will be displayed on here as well. Keep scrolling down. A calendar for our events, for council meetings, for any board meetings. That's something we would be updating, obviously, on a weekly basis. And our respective channel 1300, we already have it on our website, but something we would like to add is on the side having a schedule of what we're airing, so that would be something new. And then, of course, if you want to go through the departments, but we'll be working with department heads to update any information. If there's something that we currently don't have, maps or graphics, maybe online payments for certain departments, or if we need to merge anything, we'll be working with them to make sure everything is updated. Or if there's anything they've seen in other cities that we're missing, we would implement that as well. We can go back to...
The other thing is it has a search. Our current site, you don't have a search. So if you can go in and says, okay, how do I get a billing permit? Or, let me see the city charter, you actually have, you don't have that ability in our current website, which is really important.
Yeah, with the keyword, you'd be able to easily get there. Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, you can go back to the... Can I scroll down, Alex?
Mike, I have a question real quick. Well, Kenya, for first. Who currently right now runs our webpage? Like to make changes and all that?
Some of the IT department.
The IT department?
Mostly the media relations department, and we do get assistance from IT as well. And then for employment, it would be Naomi. They do the job postings for agendas. Anna, EDC has access as well to upload agendas, but mostly our department.
Yes. Oh, okay, so each department has their own...
They have to maintain their own section.
Yeah, well, only certain departments, like those that will constantly, like Anna's constantly making changes, so she would have access. EDC would have access, IT, HR for job opportunities. There's a few. Amy would have access to the events calendar, but mostly it would be the media relations department.
Do you have other ones that we were going to show? I thought they were going to show three.
We do, we do have...
Because they had three websites they wanted to show, and I want you to pick. So they had Yonkers, you want to show them the other one, how it looks? Because there's two from out of state and one from Texas.
Yeah, they're all with Rockdale.
I like the events calendar.
Me too.
Because that's real important for everybody to kind of be on the same page.
It was open already on there, but it's Rockdale.
I posted the...
Oh, okay. Rockdale, Texas.
Rockdale?
Yes. That's another one. They're all very similar, and of course, there's inspiration we can take from all of them.
Those are the Blue Barners at City Hall?
Mm-hmm. No one has a calendar as well? Do you have a preference, Mike?
And Mike liked this one.
I like Rockdale.
You like Rockdale?
He liked this one.
I like Rockdale. I think it's real, it's a little simpler.
I like it too. I like simple. You don't want to over...
Yeah.
Too much stuff. Just tell me where I can go and pay my bill and where I can search.
And it's got the community calendar in there, which I thought was very important.
Community calendar is important.
Yeah, they're all great. It's hard to choose. They're all great.
Yeah, they're really weird.
There was one more. Alex, if you can open it up. City of Albertville. Who's another one?
The La Lomita.
See, and this one doesn't really have the community calendar like the first two.
No, this is more, yeah, this one has a lot less. I think it was...
Let me see the council people there? We look sharper than that.
We need to update headshots.
You're so funny.
What, they have a student, City Council President? Can you move it up again?
It's Alex, move down.
Alex, can you please move it up? City Council President, then the pro temp, then the place two, place three, four, and the mayor? Wow, that's interesting.
What, what?
I don't know what state that is.
Alabama.
They had their cap.
Yes.
Yeah, it's right there, upcoming events. You just passed it.
Right. The president or the presidents?
Yeah, you can go back to the presentation.
Alabama.
That's what I just mentioned, right? Our priorities for the homepage. Our color schemes, these are the colors that have always been used in Mission. You've got the orange for citrus and the blue for a little bit more of a polished, classic look. These are the colors we currently have, and we could stick to something like this, of course, unless you have any suggestions, but these are the colors we normally use for everything. And then these are logos that have also been here for many, many years. Can't tell you since when, but since forever. The only new one that we incorporated was the white one, that way, you know, whenever we need something more subtle, but these are the logos that everyone in the city should be using, and other than this, only the library has their own logo. And PD and Fire.
The Black Note.
The what?
This black?
The black one. You don't like it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we normally, in my, we use the blue in the bottom one and the seal, the white and blue, but the black and white is used by a lot of departments. So that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kenya.
So are we going to move with the Rockdale?
With Rockdale.
Whatever, which one do you all like? That's just a template that they can work on. Rockdale's okay, that's...
And of course, we're going through, you saw the timeline, we're going through a lot of meetings with these professionals, and they'll be making recommendations, but just so we know what you're looking for, and we can stick to something similar. just so we know what you're looking for and we can stick to something similar.
So when will you come back with the, like, maybe after the color and layout? Or who's gonna approve that color and layout? February seventh?
I think, to be quite honest, we'll, we'll do it before the website review meeting because what they'll do, they, they do like wireframe, so they'll, they'll identify where exactly we're gonna put all the pages. And so what they're gonna do first is they're gonna scrape all of our existing content. And we've been getting the departments to revise their content, so we, we have a very smooth transition. So I would say the best time to meet is right before the website review meeting, likely at the design concept phase, so that way we need to make any adjustments when we go back and make any adjustments necessary.
And when would we have that ability to have input on that?
So, so what we can, well, we can bring you potential updates at the design concept phase, which is, that's when they're probably gonna start actually doing the.
So I'll check for that meeting in April.
Mike, if I can have a, make a comment, man?
Yes, ma'am.
To Mr. Peters. I, without talking to the directors, I kind of understand that we're starting the new year right now and they're probably really hectic and busy doing their day-to-day stuff. I would like to see more of like Kenya and our IT director, visit with the directors to see and actually look at what's currently on the webpage and how we can work together to fix that. Because if we ask our directors, give us whatever it is there, I mean, they're still doing their, their other stuff and maybe Kenya and our IT director can, all of them together, work on refreshing it a little better.
Okay.
I can do that or meet with them individually.
Good night.
Okay.
So, so we'd like to see it before the.
Something before April fifteenth, isn't that too long?
That, that's when they, because they'll do this other day, and then so when they're actually considering, that's usually around the April timeframe. So the sooner that they get us at least a layout, like we can bring it to the council at least, so you can see what they call the wireframe, it just shows where exactly things are placed.
Well, that would be April fourteenth. We can do it April fourteenth. That's your first meeting.
The first week in February?
First meeting.
First meeting in February?
They got what, about three weeks?
So what we can do is let's say if they update sooner and they say, hey, we have a working product soon as in that, we'll send it out on the Friday memo and then we can schedule a meeting to address it.
Yeah, start putting our pictures and see how it's gonna look and y'all do that or no?
I mean, I, I would say it would have to be, whenever, we have to import all the pages first, so we, we can do that, so that we can see how it goes, but that would probably be at the April timeframe. But, but like I said, that's when they're gonna actually have.
Go back to the timeline?
See, we have.
I just don't want it to be kind of late for us to make a decision, I mean, before they do all of this work.
Maybe the first meeting in March, at the latest, we could have.
And what we can do, like I said, whenever, we'll, we'll meet with them and we can schedule a meeting with Civic Plus person tomorrow, and we'll talk to them about making that decision and what we want. And then we'll send it out on the Friday memo and give them a meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. We'll look at something in March.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, it is four thirty-nine, so we are going to go to our public hearing. And the first one is a rezoning item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council and City Manager. We received an email from the engineer for item number ten and eleven. They're requesting that we take no action. The property owner wants to delay the rezoning at this time, so they request that we take no action on ten and eleven.
Okay. We'll move on to item twelve.
Okay, let me ask a question. Patricia, since there are no taking no action, do they wanna hear, when they take no action, that means it's, we don't have to re-advertise for public hearings. How do we handle that? Cause normally on, on zoning, you have to hear from the public and either you table the public hearing, but to take no action, at least, you, how do we handle it?
I think the preferred practice is if you take no action and you later post it on the agenda, you have to give notice again of public hearing.
Yes, that would be my preference too.
We would need to restart.
Okay, restart.
We start with enough causes again. Yes. Item number twelve is a conditional use permit for Elise Event Center located at twenty-four oh seven Brock Street, Suite C. This would be out of Lot Nine Sherry Business Center, also known as Sherry Business Center Condos Unit Number Seventeen. It's currently Zone C Three, general business, and the applicant is Elizabeth Gonzalez. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately a hundred and thirty feet east of Sherry Road along the south side of Brock Street. The applicant is leasing a two thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet suite within a multi-unit commercial plaza for an event center. Staff notes that this suite is being shared with a church, podcast and an all-weather station office. The applicant proposes to have weddings, quinceañeras, birthday parties. Access to the site will be provided via driveway off of Sherry Road and Brock Street. Hours of operation proposed are Friday and Saturdays from two PM to five PM and six PM to twelve AM. For employees, they're proposing two employees for parking. There's a total of a hundred seating spaces, which require thirty-three parking spaces. It is noted that the parking area is held in common. There's a total of a hundred and forty-two existing parking spaces that are shared with other businesses. Staff notes that when this commercial plaza was built, the parking requirements were based on square footage, not on the actual use. Staff mailed out twenty-five notices to property owners within two-hundred-foot radius of the site, as if this writing staff has not received any comments in favor against the request. Staff note that although this is a very busy commercial plaza, more than fifty percent of the businesses are only open Monday to Friday and close at five. The applicant's events are mostly Saturdays, however, staff, staff notes that there are three existing event centers and two restaurants that already, that already use the entire parking spaces. For that reason, staff cannot support the request. PNC and staff recommended denial. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Please come to the podium and if you'd speak.
Okay, está bien, no, está bien, pero no más el nombre y la, y la, de la dirección.
Eh, mi nombre es Elizabeth Gonzalez, soy la pastora de también de la Iglesia Cristo Centro y obviamente dueña también del local Elise Event. Bueno, estamos en el veinticuatro cero siete Brock Street, Suite C, y realmente el salón lo utilizamos solamente casi un día, es muy raro que lo utilicemos un viernes y un sábado, más que todos son los sábados. Nunca he tenido problemas con el estacionamiento y a pesar de que hay dos salones también, a veces ellos están en un horario, yo estoy en otro, y, y bueno, eso era lo que quería comentar. También el salón lo hicimos y lo utilizamos para que los fondos también que se utilizan de ahí también sirvan para ayuda de la congregación de Iglesia Cristo Centro, porque realmente no somos muy grande la congregación, entonces todos los fondos también que se utilizan para eso es para ayudar también a la iglesia. Por eso tratamos de hacer eso.
Okay, okay. Gracias.
Gracias.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Is there anyone online? Do we have any questions? I have a, I have a quick question. Just, is there, so this is a conditional use permit for the actual event center, right?
This event center was already conducting without a business license. So when we saw the previous event center, we went and, and target all the businesses to make sure they all had a, a business license. That's why we, how we found out that most of them had multiple businesses within one and were operating without a license.
I see.
So she's trying to be in compliance, but parking is an issue and that's the main concern that we have.
Okay, so I guess my question also is, would they, in order to sell or, or serve alcoholic beverages, they'd have to come in for another permit, is that correct? So is it safe to say that there, there will not be any alcoholic beverages sold or served?
Right now, yes, they wouldn't have permission to, to serve any alcohol.
Okay.
It's just for the actual event.
Okay.
Mayor, I had done, I had met with several people in that plaza and a lot of them are not in compliance, so that's why I don't feel comfortable about not approving for her, cause we have even, we spoke to even with Mr. Nacho Pesina and they had ten people in there, so I don't think it'd be fair we approve another event center, there's another one there. So under what grounds do we wanna deny something like this?
The, the only, that's why it's before the council. Our concern is just the parking. I know they have been operating.
But we approve other two with parking and we had this issue and we approve it for them.
Yes.
So why would we not do this?
Well, in this, in this case, what we've alerted is we've alerted, we met with the HOA and in their covenants, the city doesn't enforce their covenants, but there is a restriction that was brought up to our attention that states that they are not supposed to be leasing for any, any of this type of events or event centers, churches or businesses that would create excessive traffic. So since the city does not.
According to the covenants, I think even restaurants.
So, yes, that is, that is actually one.
Do we have restaurants there? Yes.
That, that is one, and since we don't enforce these restrictions, we did notify the HOA, let them know that from this day forward, whatever was there, we have to respect and which has a license, but any, any new businesses that would generate traffic as an events, such an event center or a restaurant or a bar and grill, it would not be allowed. It would not be, we would not be able to issue a business license.
For the future.
In the, in the future, for any, any new, yes.
I, I think this is kind of a, a unique situation because I think, you know, the, they've been using it as a, as an event center, there hasn't been any issues, is that correct, chief, as far as any, any issues that, that have been?
No se han peleado ahí.
Yeah, really.
Chief told us, Mission, Pini.
Well, yeah, that's kind of what I meant.
Trancasos, o pleitos ahí, no?
Not to my knowledge, Major. Mayor, I would have to go back and look at the police records before I comment, but not to my knowledge, I think I would have heard, we would have heard something by now.
Yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't gotten any complaints, not by.
Okay.
So Mayor, can I have, ask a question?
Yes.
So Suzie, they've already been having this and they've never got the permit?
That is correct.
Right. And so how did they know to come get the permit? Or did they just not know?
They, well, they were aware that they, that they, that they needed a permit, just nobody had actually come and secured the actual permit.
Seventy-five percent of the people that is in that plaza don't have permits.
Oh my goodness.
We, we did, we did send code enforcement out there, we did already send letters. Most of them have already approached the city and are trying to be in compliance.
Okay. Okay, well, I think, you know, again, my, my opinion, I think we're trying to, to get into compliance and she's been there for, already for a while, been using it as an event center. I think it would be fair to, to at least give her a year to see if, if anything, you know, how, how it goes and see how, how they, how, if there are any issues arise as far as parking and all that kind of thing. I don't imagine that that's gonna happen, cause it hasn't happened yet, but that would be my thought on that.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
And for how much time?
For one year.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for a year for Elise Event Center at twenty-four oh seven Brock Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and Anna, we're out of order on the ordinance numbers?
It's fifty-five, eighty-four.
Fifty-five, eighty-four.
Mayor, I just have on this item, Suzie, so you say there's an HOA?
Yes.
It's been a while since I've driven by there, like inside, but when I would eat at that Chinese restaurant, the parking is horrendous. So are they going to work on fixing the parking lot?
Yes, we sent them a letter to fix the parking, the, the parking, the striping and lighting. That is, we've met, we, I personally have met with the HOA president and she is gonna take care of that, address the concern regarding the parking.
And also the beautification, cause I do know that they have greenery around the area, but there's just no upkeep of it.
Yes, they will be addressing all of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez, habrían de hablar con el, la HOA, el estacionamiento si se necesita arreglar. Las matas que tienen esas rayan los carros y todo eso, so I think you can fix it. Pa' que hable con ellos.
Okay.
Oh, sí?
They started with the maintenance.
Okay, good. All right, next item?
Item number thirteen is a conditional use permit renewal to keep a portable building for office use at three oh two South Taylor Road. This is out of a point one zero two of one acre tract of land, out of a tract of land adjacent to Lot one seventy-six and one eighty-six Johnny Sherry subdivision. It's currently Zone Commercial, C Three. The applicant is Best Assets LLC in care of Ryan Stauffer. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Victoria Avenue and Taylor Road. The applicant desires to keep a twelve-by-sixty-four modular office for a general contractor for the Jeep dealership. Access to the site, to the site is off of Victoria Street and Taylor Road. The last CUP approved for this location was on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three for a period of one year. Days and hours of operation are Monday to Friday from eight to five. They currently have three employees. Based on the parking, based on the square footage of the building, they require five parking spaces, which they are meeting. It is not uncommon to have a portable building to be used as an office. Staff notes that having a portable building may not be a long-term desire for the city when considering aesthetics. Thus perpetual CUP monitoring will be the norm where one day the portable building would need to be upgraded with an outside structure. Staff mailed out twelve notices to property owners within two-hundred-foot radius. Staff has not received any comments in favor against the request. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation in order to continue to assess this operation, continue compliance with all city codes and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Are there any questions for staff or a motion to be offered?
Please, so move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as, as requested. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that is ordinance number five-five-eight-five. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we're gonna go back to item number thirty-one?
Forty-five.
Forty-five? I'm like, what?
Uh, Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Item thirty-one is authorize a sixty-month lease of Sen Pro Mail, Mail Center two thousand postage meter from Pitney Bowes via by board contract seven-seven-five-two-four. Our current postage meter contract is expiring February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-five. The good news is that we're gonna get an upgraded equipment with technology and the price is going from six hundred and twenty-two dollars to six hundred and seven dollars per month for the sixty-month lease. There will be no budget impact since we already have a purchase order in place for this fiscal year, so staff and city manager are recommending approval.
Okay, make a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the lease, Sen Pro Mail Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, I come before you to present item thirty-two. Authorization to engage M two engineering for the design of Twenty-Second Street Expansion Project and authorize the city manager to execute counter incident there too. The city of Mission Plus to undertake the street improvement project for Twenty-Second Street, which encompasses approximately one thousand three hundred and fifty linear feet of roadway. The scope of work will include new street infrastructure to ensure improved functionality, durability and safety for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The project alliance, which the city goes to improve urban mobility, extend the lifespan of transportation infrastructure and enhance overall community connectivity from Taylor Road to Sherry Road. In accordance with the Texas Professional Service Procurement Act and after negotiating with M two engineering, we negotiated a proposed proposal for forty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, are there any questions?
This is for the, what is it that they're gonna do?
This is for Twenty-Second Street to punch through from Sherry Road to Taylor Road. This is the.
Just south of the, the.
We have moved at the last council meeting, the subdivision just adjacent to this street and M two engineering did most. And, uh, M-two engineering did most of the legwork already, so they turned in a-
So are we gonna pay the street?
No, we don't have money to pay. We have money to do the engineering and we'll wait your next budget here to see about budgeting. We're about a hundred and fifty thousand and they're about short in doing the construction. What's in the account?
But there is escrow money in those, right?
There is escrow money in the two adjacent subdivisions that are in between here, but not enough because, uh, the north subdivision just adjacent to this one was done back in twenty-seventeen, before pandemic. So as we know, the numbers are more expensive, so we don't have enough to finalize the construction.
So how much do we have for escrow money?
Right now, we have about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. This project is about three hundred thousand.
From the other two people? From the other people?
Correct.
From both developers, a hundred and seventy-eight?
Both developers combined.
Okay, but that includes the additional right-of-way, so we're not paying for additional right-of-way?
No, the, the, the right-of-way was, uh,
Donated.
allocated to us during the subdivision process.
Okay.
So we got a seven, a hundred and seventy-eight. And how much is, how much would it cost us to do the street? I know we don't have money, my bad, I just wanna know.
Costs about three, approximately three hundred thousand to the street.
How much?
Three hundred thousand.
So, three hundred thousand, so I subtract one seventy-eight. So it's a hundred and twenty-two thousand. And how much is, how much is the new developer gonna put money for this for much?
That's how much we have in term of orders.
Oh, with a hundred and seventy?
Yes.
Yes.
So how much are we gonna collect from this developer?
We already did.
Forty-three?
No, that's how much it's, uh, gonna cost us for the design, forty-three thousand five hundred. The escrow that we have between both subdivisions, it's approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Even with the one that they built?
Yes.
But how much did we collect from the first one?
From the first one, if I'm not mistaken, we collected about seventy thousand. And on this one, we're collecting about a hundred and ten.
So it's one eighty.
Mayor, I see Mr. Solino, engineer of the project, over there eager to come and talk to us.
Well, I mean, I, do you have any other questions for him?
I mean.
I think, I think we're good, but, but thank you, I appreciate you, you being here. All right, is there any other questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Yes, one more question.
Go ahead.
So you say how much it would cost us to do the street?
About three hundred thousand dollars.
Plus the forty-three?
Plus the forty-three.
So about three hundred and fifty?
Correct.
So we only have fifty percent?
Yes.
Okay. I really would, I mean, we need to really put in the, if we wait another three years, it's gonna be, we're gonna be more short.
More expensive, yes.
So I think, Mr. Perez, you really need to put it for next year. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a lot of traffic there, I mean, and-
Will do.
And it's needed.
Yes. That's one of our main corners also. And between emergency vehicles, it does, it is between four ninety-five and, uh, and mile two. So it's about a half a mile, more or less, that we need a punch-through street, yeah. Yes. And it's a white street, that's about a forty-three back-to-back street.
Very good. Let's put it on a fast track.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
For the forty-three thousand, we put a shore of about a hundred and twenty, okay?
Okay. There's a motion and a second to authorize and engage M-two engineering for the design of Twenty-Second Street Expansion Project. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-three. Authorization to extend second and final one-year renewal for one on-call geotechnical and material testing services to Millennium Engineering. The city of Mission entered into an agreement with Millennium Engineering for on-call geotechnical and material testing services for the infrastructure projects within the city of Mission and its extraterritorial jurisdiction. The contract term was for one year with two one-year renewal options. These will extend the bid number twenty-three zero ninety-two eleven twenty-eight from January nineteen, twenty-twenty-five through January eighteen, twenty-twenty-six. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Did the fee stay the same?
The fee stays the same through plan as only.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor to, uh, approve the annexed second and final one-year renewal with Millennium Engineers, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Only one way short.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We request approval of budget amendment in the amount of fourteen thousand from hotel motel tax for the Texas Citrus Fiesta twenty-twenty-five coronation event. And a budget amendment in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six for, from the general fund for the salary and benefits for the events aid position. Requesting funding for the rental, uh, of the runway stage for the twenty-twenty-five Texas Citrus Fiesta Royal Ball Coronation in the amount to not exceed fourteen thousand. And the salary request of the position of an events aid with an establishment salary of eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty, benefits of ten thousand eight hundred and forty-six, the total funding required for the position amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion?
Benefits is about sixty percent of the eighteen thousand. Who's fifty-eight percent on benefits?
Well, the lower the salary is, the higher the benefit percentage. So if, if the person was getting paid a hundred thousand, then the benefits would be ten percent. But because they don't get paid a whole lot, the benefits take a lot more.
That makes sense.
Is this a full-time position?
No, it's, it's-
Part-time.
Part-time.
Yes, sir.
So.
And when you say a budget amendment, you're taking it from what, from what department?
So the budget amendment would be from the police department. Since St. Amy is currently held at the police department.
But you're taking the money from, from fund balance?
Yeah, from the, from the fund balance.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Is there a motion?
What do you recommend, Mayor?
I would recommend approval of the item as presented.
You have review, you feel comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the budget amendment as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Next item? Replacing batteries.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chief Torres. Item number thirty-five. Seeking authorization to purchase one UPS battery replacement at the Mission Police Department IT's room, uh, from Telepro via TIPS, two-three-zero, one-on-five, in the total amount of thirty-seven thousand fifty-two point oh nine. Uh, this is to prevent, uh, potential risk of leakage, damage of equipment and fire hazard. I recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions?
Since the chief recommends. I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to purchase a replacement UPS battery in the amount of thirty-seven thousand fifty-two dollars and nine cents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Next item?
Item number thirty-six calls for the approval of ordinance number-
Fifty-five eighty-six.
Fifty-five eighty-six, establishing a rolling stock equipment fund for the Mission Fire Department. The rolling stock equipment shall include, but not be limited to, all firefighting and emergency medical services, vehicles, equipment, tools, turn, turnout gear and other firefighting EMS, equipment, computers, radios and other electronic devices principally used by the respective fire department for the functioning of their duties. Contributions shall generally be funded after the first one point, one million five hundred thousand in revenue from the fire department emergency medical services has been deposited into the general fund and thereafter, any net collections above the one million five hundred thousand collected from emergency medical services shall be deposited into the FDR SE beginning fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five and future years. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
One question. Uh, Joey, uh, the, the fire administration looked at it and they're okay with the way it's written?
I believe, uh, you still have that handled, uh, the matters, uh, that we can discuss.
Yeah. Yeah, he's, he's, well, I feared he would have told you, but Patricia, he talked to you and he's good with it.
Yes, actually, um, Chief Silva and myself sat and worked through this ordinance and the, the intent and the restrictions, um, together.
Okay, very good. All right. Any other questions or discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to establish a rolling stock equipment fund for Mission Fire Department. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that's ordinance number five-five-eight-six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Mr. Silva?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Interim Deputy Chief Joey Flood is here, uh, presenting items thirty-seven and thirty-eight on behalf of, uh, Fire Chief Mike Silva. No, I, agenda item number thirty-seven, we seek authorization to purchase structural firefighting protective gear and fire extinguisher training prop from NAFCO for a total cost of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and seven dollars with twenty-four cents via by-board contract number six ninety-eight dash twenty-three. The firefighting protective gear is essential for ensuring the safety of our personnel and maintaining compliance with industry standards. The fire extinguisher training prop will enhance the department's training capabilities, improving readiness and effectiveness in emergency situations. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions? Discussion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a mo- motion and a second to authorize a purchase of structural, um, firefighting protective gear. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item?
Agenda item number thirty-eight. Seeking approval of an amendment to an inter, inner local agreement between the County of Hidalgo, Texas and the City of Mission for the establishment of an emergency services paramedic program partially funded by Hidalgo County American Res- Rescue Plan Act Recovery Funds. A budget amendment is needed to recognize incoming revenue from, one, the inner local for a paramedic training course occurring on November twenty-twenty-four for ten participants in the amount of thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars, which is fifty percent of the program cost for ten participants. And number two, reimbursements from participating municipalities of fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which is fifty percent of the program cost for five participants from other municipalities. The rem- remaining thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars in ARPA funds allocated from the Hidalgo County Inner Local for the remaining ten participants will be used in the current fiscal year, thereby not included in this budget amendment. Additionally, the budget amendment does not include the fifty percent share for the City of Mission's five participants, which is fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, given that it was budgeted in the current fiscal year. The City of Mission will not incur additional costs for other municipalities and will receive a twenty percent of program cost for its participants. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the inner local agreement between the County of Hidalgo and the City of Mission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number thirty-nine is the authorization to enter into an inter-local agreement between the City of Mission and Awa Sud regarding sewer services to the customer, also known as La Mansión Health Clinic subdivision. La Mansión Health Clinic is located at the northwest corner of Palo Street and Morphew Road, along the north side of Morphew Road. Awa Sud sewer line is approximately two hundred and thirty-five linear feet away from the current site. An alternative is to connect to the City of Mission City Sewer. Awa Sud agrees that the City of Mission may provide retail sewer service to La Mansión Health Clinic until such time as Awa Sud transitions the customer to Awa Sud's sewer services. The City of Mission shall not expand its sewer services beyond the sewer service to the customer or add any additional sewer customers in the Awa Sud Sewer CCN without prior written permission from Awa Sud. In an effect to assist for a successful completion, we are seeking your consideration to allow this subdivision to connect to the City of Mission. Sewer system, staff and city manager recommend that approve.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the inner local agreement between the City of Mission and Awa Sud, Awa Special Utility District, um, regarding the sewer service. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Item number forty is seeking authorization to accept a grant award from the Office of the Governor for the Project Safe Neighborhood Program in the amount of forty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty with respect to a budget amendment. The project will allow the department to purchase four emergency communication towers with beacon lights. The program has no match requirements. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept a grant for forty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty thousand from the Office of the Governor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item number forty-one is seeking authorization to accept a grant award from the Office of the Governor for the FY twenty-five Rifle Resistant Body Armor Grant Program in the amount of forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five with respect to a budget amendment. Uh, the project will allow the department to purchase over forty Level Three Rifle Resistant Body Armor and Plates. The program has no match requirement. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the grant from the Office of the Governor for Rifle Resistant Body Armor in the amount of forty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries-
Mr. Lisander, you're one of the ones that brings money.
Right.
I like to count, I like, you need to come every meeting.
Every meeting.
I'll be here, yes, sir. Thank you.
Five zero, thank you. Item number forty-two.
Mayor and City Council, uh, requesting that you consider moving our regular City of Mission meetings starting from four-thirty to three-thirty. Uh, we're gonna spend about thirty to forty minutes on just presentations alone. It's for your consideration.
Okay, and this would be with public hearings, um, to be held at four-thirty and, and, uh, our, um, citizens that are notified will be aware that the public hearing does not start till four-thirty. So they don't have to hurry to be here at three-thirty because we will not start the public hearings until four-thirty. And that's the plan. Um, I think this would, would help also with our staff, uh, you know, having them not to, uh, be here at that extra hour. So, uh, I would highly recommend that we, we, uh, pass this, uh, proposal. Okay, may I have a motion?
Yes, I so move.
Okay.
I was gonna say ten in the morning. No, it's great.
Okay. Alrighty, so we, uh, the, the motion to change our meetings from three, from four-thirty to three-thirty with the public hearings being held at four-thirty. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Okay, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
You remember when they wanted that five thirty?
The January twenty-seventh meeting? Okay. Starting January twenty-seventh, which is our next meeting. Alrighty, next item?
Yeah, this is a resolution declaring expectation to be reimbursed for expenditures proceeding for any future debt.
Okay, and this would be resolution number what?
Nineteen forty-four.
Nineteen forty-four. Okay. Is, are there any questions, discussion or a motion?
I so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution nineteen forty-four declaring, um, expectation to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Next item.
This is a resolution authorizing action on preparing for the issuance of City of Mission Tax Notes Series twenty twenty five. It'll be resolution nineteen forty five, is that correct? Recommending approval.
Don't we need a dollar amount?
Do we? Approximately five million dollars.
I assume.
Okay.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the resolution nineteen forty five authorizing various actions to prepare for the issuance of the City of Mission Texas Tax Notes approximately in the amount of five million dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Unfinished business? I don't believe we have any unfinished business, so we'll go on to routine matters. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council, we have the Texas Citrus Fiesta Production Costume Style Show, which is going to be January twenty first at six thirty at the Mission Events Center. We're going to have the ribbon cutting of the all inclusive Lions Park on January twenty third at ten thirty P M at fifteen hundred East Giga, that's a loop. We have this Texas Citrus Fiesta Coronation on January twenty third at seven P M in the evening at the Mission Events Center. We have the Parade of Oranges on January twenty fifth at twelve noon on Conway Avenue. We have the Fun Fair Festival on January twenty fifth at two P M at the Seed Building. And we have the Royal Ball on January twenty fifth at seven P M at the Mission Events Center.
Okay. It's a very busy two weeks, yes.
I don't have much to say, Mayor, just everybody, I know, I think we said it, right? Happy New Year. Everybody stay warm and safe and be careful because there's a lot of people like me coughing and you might get sick.
Yes.
No comments.
No comments.
Ms. Kerlak, I know you're online.
No comments. Y'all be safe.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to remind staff and council that the legislative tour is also on Thursday, the twenty third. So if we could just kind of split our time between that and coronation, that would be, that would be great. Also, January is the appreciation for all, for school district trustees. So I would like to give a little shout out to the state's school district trustees, thank them for their time and their dedication. So that's all I have. So if there's a motion to go into executive session?
I assume.
Appreciate that. Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session subject to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four, five five one point seven one. And we'll be back.
May I have a motion to...
I shall move.
There's a motion.
Yes.
A second, Ms. Jessica.
Yes, a second.
And a second to go into regular session.
We need to break this one back to...
I can continue it? Okay. Okay.
Michael.
All in favor of going back into regular session say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. On item number one, I believe that there are no action on item number one.
No action.
Item number two, Black Diamond Developers, I don't think we have any action on that item either.
No action.
On item number three, we do need action on this item.
Is that one for the home?
Yes.
Yes. So we're going to look at advertising 919 Rankin Street.
I shall move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to advertise 919 Rankin Street out of Carlos G. Leal subdivision lot 19 block six for sale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Item number four.
Mr. Proceed as discussed in executive session.
Is there a motion?
I shall move. It's not Black Diamond.
No. There is a motion.
What number is that? I'm sorry.
Number four.
Number four.
Oh, I second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
You didn't do it right.
To move forward with transferring real estate contract from the City of Mission to Mission Education Development Council for Project ABC. All in favor say aye.
I'm staying on number four.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm staying on number four.
I'll make a...
My motion's all. I need to retract that motion.
Yes, no, he's abstaining.
And I would like to make the motion, Mayor.
And I'll second that.
Okay, there's a... On item number four, we are... The motion was made by Commissioner Ortega and the second was made by Commissioner Gerlach to move forward with transferring the real estate contract from the City of Mission to the Mission Economic Development Council for Project ABC. All in favor say aye. All in favor say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Item number six.
Seven.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and...
Proceed.
Proceed. I forgot the word. Sorry, I have a migraine. Proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to proceed as discussed in executive session on 2.332 acres of land situated in Idalo County. Lots 216 and 226. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Item number six.
Seven.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and...
Proceed.
Proceed. I forgot the word. Sorry, I have a migraine. Proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to proceed as discussed in executive session related to the collection of past due utility bills. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. And item number seven.
I'm more to approve as discussed in executive session.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to proceed as discussed in executive session related to the community development block rent home located at 1313 East Second Street. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. And there being no more business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I want to adjourn.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second to adjourn the meeting. And it is 6:50.